I wanted to just, the eighty-foot ordinance, the eighty-foot setback requirement clearly doesn't work on the, in this zone, on the corner lots. My lot was seventy feet, so eighty feet would have been ten foot into my neighbor's property. This one allows a very narrow postage stamp dissociated from the house for any accessory structure. So that, that variance, I think, is a simple hardship. The house is where it's at, and I think there's no problem with the location of the deck in terms of the, being attached to the house. I did want to thank the neighbor. Again, I, as Mary said, I don't necessarily have any reason to believe my neighbor would store anything under the, the, the outdoor port, the covered porch, but I do worry about future owners. And so when I asked the architect about whether there was anything to cover that, he immediately contacted the owner and they agreed to put lattice and some landscaping. So I have to thank them for so readily agreeing to do that. I do think that certainly with the, the lattice attached, I think it does actually break down the mass of the structure. I can't see the deck, so I'm less concerned about the deck, I guess, but I'm not, I'm not wearing my planning hat today. But I think, as a neighbor, I think it does break down the mass of, of the house and it provides benefit. I never understood why the developer of that house didn't make a better connection to the backyard. We even suggested doing front-facing garages on mountain to help break up that mass and get better use of the property, but they elected to not do that. And I would have supported that as well. So all, and I want to thank the, the neighbor for so readily agreeing to screen it, and I think it actually will be an, an improvement to the house.
Can I just clarify what the, I wasn't involved in that prior.
Thank you.
I wasn't, I bought the house, oh, in other words, I wasn't involved in whatever prior.
Right. You just.
It was on fire when I got there.
Yeah, and I think I was.
I, I bought that house as it, as it is now.
Yeah, and I think I was clear about that. It was with the prior developer that, that we, you know, we got involved to try to make it better, but they didn't listen, so. But I, I think it's an improvement, and thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have a statement? I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Board members?
I mean, my initial reaction was related to softening the look of it, which they addressed before you came in this evening, so the lattice, I think, helps. I just, if, if we approve the request, I think we want to be very specific in terms of landscaping, if there's in front of it along Mountain Avenue.
What would you suggest?
We'll just make sure that the, the approval says that the plant should be six feet tall.
Evergreens, six feet in height above the wall at the time of planting.
Yeah.
We traditionally will do that anyway.
Would that be acceptable?
It is acceptable.
That's pretty.
When the plan show, I think, five, I would, I think we should just say it should be five. A minimum of five, a minimum of six feet tall.
Anyone else?
Matt, this don't make it sound silly, but it's a genuine question.
The meeting has been closed. Public meeting's closed.
To clarify what you just said.
About five evergreens, six feet.
Okay. What if they die?
Then you have to replace them.
That was my question. It was a genuine question.
Yeah.
Because typically what happens is we put it, you know, they haven't said it, but I'm anticipating that when someone makes the motion and they mention this condition, they may include a requirement that the resolution be recorded, so that if you were to sell the house in the future, any future owner would also be obligated to maintain that landscape.
Understood. So, so my responsibility is to plant and maintain?
Correct.
Understood. Thank you. I just wanted clarification.
Anyone else on the board? I'll just add that this is a very special area of town. Anyone who's lived in this town for any number of years knows that the steepness of that area is unmatched anywhere else in Short Hills. And I don't know why the original owner didn't think of this before you did, but they didn't, so you have. And thank you, Mr. Keller, for your comments as well. And I also would be in favor of this. So is there a motion to approve with a condition relating to the landscaping as stated?
I would move to approve. With condition, as Gail can enunciate with the planning of landscaping six feet above the wall with, to be recorded?
And a minimum of five evergreens?
Right.
I mean, it doesn't sound unreasonable. That's what they're showing in the plans, so.
Okay. Whatever, yeah, as, as would be on the plan. If they're fine, that's fine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary, is that?
Yes.
Will thank you, Torres.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have one more residence case before we hopefully get our missing member here, and that is Shetty at AD Hillside.
Vikas Shetty.
Mr. Shetty, before you begin, I have a, an issue. I was unable to, looking at your plans, I was unable to see what fence we're talking about here. There's an application for?
Yeah.
A fence?
Fence and, first of all, thank you for, for you guys, for the time, right? The application is for the fence and the playset. The playset is already being installed. So.
Where is the fence supposed to go?
You should have gotten two servings in your application. One shows the swing, the one with green highlighter shows the fence.
I don't see any green highlighting.
I was looking forward to.
I see a round circle, which is the swing set.
Oh, you know, like, we have a light gray outline of the fence, like.
Like a reverse L?
Yes.
Oh, I think I see it then.
I don't know. I still don't see it.
It's very, very thin.
It's very thin.
It's right there.
Mine doesn't show that at all.
It doesn't even have that at all. Yeah, it's very, very thin.
Oh, I see this. Yeah, I see this.
This is it. This is the fence.
Okay.
So, as a, this is my first time house buying, so the, the playset, there are a lot of roots which I don't know, obviously, right? And this playset was installed in the, the backyard for play for my kids. I have two little kids, and that was installed when I got the notice, right? And that's when I put in for a variance. This is the spot which is a big enough spot to play for my kids, and I don't have a decent backyard where I can put that playset. So that's when we decided to put that playset, right, in the, in the, in the side yard. So the variance is for the playset and the, because to make it more safe, the fence around And it has been, already been covered with all the bushes on the sides, a lot more trees already are there, and it's not obstructing anything if you, if you have looked at the property, right? It is covered by all the trees on the side, right? And in the summer, you won't even see the, the roadside, right?
I have a question. Why is that old playset still there on the corner?
It's not old.
The metal one?
Huh?
The metal one? That's all rusted and falling apart with the.
There is no playset there.
Pardon me?
There is no playset there, old playset.
There's an old metal.
Is it trampoline?
That's a trampoline.
That's a trampoline?
Yeah, trampoline.
Is that still used? It looks like it's rusted and falling apart.
It's not rusted. It's not rusted. Kids go and jump around there sometimes, though.
Is it shown on this plan?
No.
Does it?
It's right on the corner.
We don't require permits for handling.
And the only intent here is, right, for the three months, my kids, right, two little kids, they enjoy it for the three months, and that's the only intent there, right? So that's a place where they can run around and, and.
Why wasn't this new playset installed behind the house?
What was it?
So if there's a fenced-in area behind the house.
Yeah, but that's not enough space to, for kids to put in and run around there.
Any other questions from board members?
What kind of fence are you looking at installing? What was the material?
I'm, so the, I'm planning to have a fence which is the, the iron bars, right, so that it's more transparent. And if it's other way, any suggestions? I'm up for any suggestions. Any kind of fence you are, you, you say that that's probably a better one, so I can do that. And I'm planning to put it more transparent, the bars, iron bars, so that people, it's still, it's not blocking anything, right?
How high would the fence be?
Five feet.
One, two.
I mean, again, that's any suggestions if you guys are, I can go down or go up based on what you guys.
We're not here to design your fence for you.
No, I know, I know.
You're supposed to come in with an application that shows what you want.
Okay. So that, the intent is five feet right now?
So when you say iron bars, you mean like those black estate fence where?
Yeah.
The bars are, you know, maybe four inches apart or something?
Yeah.
You're not talking chain link?
No, not chaining, right. And again, this is my first time. I didn't even know this setup, right? Absolutely first-time homeowner, right? I would have been much more prepared. Again, I, when I looked at it around, I would have brought some pictures as well, but this is, again, as I said, this is a first-time homeowner. What I, what I saw there, and I, when I got, I didn't even know that I was, I, I got some months on that one. So I was thinking that it was the side yard, which is big enough, a big set, so we can, kids can run around. That's the only place which you have in your yard, and kids really enjoy that, right? And this probably for like another five, six years, and then probably nobody, after six, seven years, I don't know, it's much of not of use. And it, from any means, it doesn't block anything. It's all, if you see it, there are bushes already around there.
Anyone else on the board have any questions?
I, I can't see on my survey where this is going to go.
Well, I, I know.
So.
Just asking. Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions for this? Anyone in the audience who has any statements?
No, it's not.
I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Board members? I, I'm gonna go first because I'm opposed to this application.
A lot of you know what the application is.
I don't know what the application is for anyway.
Yeah.
But I'm opposed to it.
We don't have any dimensions. We don't know what the fence looks like.
We don't know what the fence looks like. This is a very critical corner of this town, corner of two main streets. This is right in the front yard as defined by the statute, and I'm opposed to it.
I'm wondering if maybe we should give the applicant, like, explain stuff to the applicant, which we've done in the past, because as he said, he is a first-time homeowner and doesn't really understand the procedure behind all of this, and maybe give him the chance to go back, rethink the application, maybe come back in with a landscaper or someone else and some photos and a more specific plan for us, you know, before we go to a vote. I don't know if maybe you wanna do that.
I'm not opposed to that.
Okay.
Okay, so let me explain to you.
I understand that you're a first-time homeowner and you didn't know the law. Unfortunately, you're charged with knowledge of the law, even though you didn't know it, you're, you're on what is called constructive notice. So it's your responsibility as a homeowner to check with the town before you put anything in on your property. Right now, my sense is that the board members are not in favor of granting this application to you, based on what they see, because it seems to them that you haven't provided them with enough information. If you ask the board to go to a vote tonight, there is a strong possibility that the board is gonna deny your application, and if that were to happen, you would not be able to come back with the same application in the future with better exhibits. What the board is suggesting is that you may want to rethink this. You may want to ask them to carry your application, leaving the hearing open, so that you have an opportunity to provide a better plan, bring in some photographs, maybe a landscaper, show how you're going to conceal the swing set, show what the fence will look like in order to perhaps convince the board that you are entitled to variance when we fund it to statute.
Sure. Yeah, so I'm open to that. I would like to do that, right, because I.
Eileen went to this matter be carried for. He's gonna have to find an architect or a landscape architect.
A landscaper.
Architect or somebody to assist him.
We could do March 2nd or March 16th.
March, let's do it March 16th. That'll give you plenty of time to get some exhibits together.
And come back.
And come back.
And you need to submit everything, whatever you're going to supplement this application with, you know, a landscaping plan, pictures of the fence, whatever you're gonna submit. You should submit ten days before the, the March 16th hearing date, so that the board secretary has the opportunity to circulate everything to the board members.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Is this gonna require a redenewal?
No.
No. Not, not unless he asks for more.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to carry this case.
Okay.
Until the hearing on March 16th. You will not need to put new notice in the newspaper or notify your neighbors unless you ask for some new variance in addition to what you've asked for. And you're going to submit whatever exhibits you're going to submit to support your application at least ten days before that hearing date.
At least ten days.
And you can always call Eileen and get confirmation from her.
So I need to get some landscaping, just as a, some landscaping.
We're not here to give you advice.
Right.
We're, we're here to tell you that what you've submitted.
Is not adequate.
Is not adequate.
Okay, alright.
Alright, now Steve has shown up having.
Wait, so let's move on.
Having brought New Jersey Transit to a meeting.
Okay, so we're done. We're making the announcement that it's being carried.
Vikas Shetty will be carried to March 16th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in this room at the municipal building.
Thank you.
On Milburn Avenue, with no further notice required unless there are new variances. Right now, as we get ready.
Good timing, Steve.
You wanna announce my arrival?
Yes. Steve has arrived at?
Seven fifty-five.
Seven fifty.
That's wrong. It's eight o'clock right now, so seven fifty-five?
Yeah. Alright, before we get started, back again on New Jersey Energy, I want to advise the board members, you may recall that at the last hearing, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, to retain a traffic expert. Now, traffic expert was Dolan and Dean. Since then, Eileen has received a phone call and I received a very lengthy letter, which I'm not gonna read into the record, but the bottom line is that Dolan and Dean, after accepting the terms and conditions of, that we recommended and suggested, has withdrawn as consulting engineers and traffic engineers in this case. I'm sure that some of you are at least a little bit curious as to why they've done that, and they've done that basically because they do a lot of work apparently for a group, the Silverman Group, which is the group involved in the proposed construction of the housing development at the Short Hills train station on that property that's partially abandoned. And they say clearly in the letter that there is no technical conflict of interest, but I think they feel uncomfortable and for whatever reason, and it's up to them, not to us, they've withdrawn. So we, they did suggest another traffic expert. Eileen has been in touch with them, and we're hoping.
Waiting for a fee proposal.
For a fee proposal from them. And that's where we stand on traffic at the moment. So once again, I know that those of you in the back are here on this case. I again invite you to come down front so you can hear better and see better, but it's up to you.
Matt, if you wanna, you know, come and sit up here, this table's empty. It's entirely up to you.
Okay.
Matt, do you have a business card?
Ah, I do, but I have it in the car. I apologize.
In the car?
Yes.
I'm not gonna have you go ahead.
Thank you.
Next time you come, bring one.
Will do.
Okay. So we're now at the point where this cross-examination has been reserved, and I think you're here, Jay.
Right. For, for the record.
Put yourself on the record.
My name is Jay Delaney. I'm with the law firm of Lynderberry, McCormick, Gestra, Book and Cooper in Summit and in Westfield, New Jersey. I'm here subbing tonight for Rob Simon, who represents an objector of the Milburn Mall. In the interest of transparency, there was a previous application that was withdrawn. I did represent some objecting neighbors in that. I, I don't represent them anymore, but I am subbing for, for Rob. He wished he was, could be here tonight, but he can't be here. That being said, Mr. Chair, I'm a little sensitive right now, having been scorched in Morris County on a case, and I'm an officer of the court. I would like for the record to make sure that nobody who's hearing this case has any relationship with me and my law firm. Unfortunately, we had a situation in Morris County. The board found no conflict, and the, the Superior Court Judge found a conflict, and the whole case has been thrown out, which, by the way, I had it since in another case where an objector, I said, maybe I won't put it on the record. He said, you're an officer of the court, you gotta put it on the record. So I'd asked everyone represent that they don't have any relationship with me or my law firm.
None? None. Okay, now.
Matt, just while, since we're now on the record in this application, earlier this evening, we had a discussion, we recognized that there's only five members present. There are other members who heard earlier portions of this application. You'll be providing transcripts so that those missing members can read the transcript or listen to the tape at their preference and be able to participate. Mr. Sotzores, who recused himself, has left the dais, so.
I wanna, I wanna enhance on that a little bit. One member who's not here tonight, in the new business tonight on this agenda, we're gonna discuss that person being excused for a period of three months. She has to leave for business purposes, so she'll be out of the country. If this board by a majority vote under the statute excuses her, then it is likely, if this comes to a vote in the next three months, that there will be two members of this nine-member, total nine-member board with the alteness, who will be unavailable to vote on this case. I'm assuming that everybody else who has missed a meeting or will miss a meeting, other than those two, will listen to the tapes or read the transcript that you'll provide. But I'm just telling you now that the maximum number will be available, will be a full board of seven.
Okay. Yes, the app, yes, the applicant is aware of that. We are aware that tonight we have five potential eligible voting members. A maximum of eligible voting members would be seven, provided that we do order transcripts of all the hearings, including tonight's, and provide same to those missing board members.
Thank you.
In addition to the, providing the transcripts to the board, I would respectfully ask that counsel for the objector on Milburn Mall be provided with a copy of the transcript as well as a courtesy.
Yep, of course.
Thank you.
We'll provide a copy to Mr. Simon and Mr. Delaney.
Yeah, just, if you, if you just send it to Eileen.
Okay.
And then she'll circulate it to the board members.
Okay, my understanding is that Rob Simon and you agreed that the witness, Mr. Hall, will be subject to cross-examination tonight?
Yes.
Is that true?
Yes, and in substitution for Rob Simon's presence, I believe Jay Delaney will be handling the cross-examination.
That, that's correct. Of course, I would, before I would start any cross, I would defer to the board with any additional questions and/or the public with any additional questions.
We have no additional questions, I think, from board members, so I don't want to speak to the board members. Anyone have any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions for Mr. Hall prior to the cross-examination by Mr. Delaney? Apparently not Mr. Delaney, so proceed.
Can I also, Board Chair, I just want to make note that we are in receipt of Martha Callahan's review for the township dated January 30th of 2020, commenting on the environmental impact statement prepared by Mr. Hall's. Would you like Mr. Hall's response on that in any fashion, or should we just go right to the cross-examination?
It's up to you.
Uh, I think we can go into the cross-examination.
And I presume respectfully that the board has received that report.
Yes.
Thank you. Good, thanks.
Mr. Hall's, I'll just remind you, you're still under oath in the previous hearings. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. Is it Mr. Hall's?
Yes.
Okay, good to see you again. Okay. And you, you prepared a report November 27th, 2019?
Yes.
And you testified to that at the last meeting on December 16th?
That's correct.
And I'm directing your attention to your report, page two of your report. The fourth paragraph, the last sentence, and I'll read it. The entire site lies within the flood hazard area associated with the East Branch Broadway River. That's correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm gonna direct your attention again, where I think you repeated that on page four of your report, under the section labeled flooding. It said, "The entire site lies within the flood hazard area associated with the East Branch Broadway River." That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now.
I apologize. Your first sighting of that information was on page two?
Page, page two of his report.
Which paragraph?
Paragraph, the first paragraph under project description.
Okay, thank you.
And it's also, again, repeated in his report as well under flooding.
Thank you.
For the average layman like me who doesn't have that, the expertise like you have, what do, what do you mean by that?
Well, there's a designated flood hazard area associated with the river itself. There's been two different mapping, two different organizations mapped the flood hazard area. One was FEMA through the flood insurance rate map program, and the second was NJDP also has a mapping for the, for the Brook. They are slightly different, but they both show that the entire property is within the flood hazard area of the Brook. So. I'll just, so the, during the hundred-year storm event is which FEMA uses, New Jersey uses the New Jersey flood hazard elevation, or hazard area, which is the hundred-year flood plus twenty-five. plus 25 percent, so it's a little bit higher. And the entire property, every portion of the property would be flooded during those flood events.
So, so in layman's terms, you're saying that this property being in the flood zone is, is, there's a strong probability that would be subject to floods?
Yes.
Okay. Now, on page three of your report, under hydrology, you say the reduction in impervious area will provide some opportunity for storm water falling on the ground surface to infiltrate into the ground, reducing the amount of surface water flowing off the site. You say that there at the top, in that section under hydrology on page three, and you also stated on page four, in the second paragraph under storm water runoff, you state, you make the same statement. Can you tell me and the board what you meant by that?
Well, the storm water runoff is basically during every rain event. So that when it rains, there's, we're looking at the site itself, the specific area of the site, and we're looking at specifically how much of the site is covered by the different soil types, or in this case, most of the site isn't covered by impervious areas. So just like the tabletop or something of a hard surface, water falls on it, it's going to runoff, it doesn't percolate through the hard surface. So by us removing impervious area, you have an ability of the rainwater to infiltrate into the ground through, through percolation.
Now, now, my understanding is that this project is a gas station and a 1,800-foot convenience store, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and I, you're advocating, I think, that the proposed project reduces the impervious cover and therefore improves the situation with drainage, is that correct?
That is correct.
So if you just put the gas station there and you didn't put the convenience store there, wouldn't you improve it even more?
Not necessarily.
But, but it seems to me, without the convenience store, you would reduce the impervious coverage even more, wouldn't you?
Well, in this case, we're proposing a, a service station with the three fueling pumps. If we were just using it as a fueling position, the gas station only, we would be, be larger than, a larger area, we'd be able to put more pumps in. So we'd be able to cover or utilize more of the site. So the two are not related in terms of if you took one out, you'll just stay there only with the three pumps? Probably not. We would expand on that and increase the number of pumps to make it fit within that footprint of the impervious area.
As you were answering the question, you were looking at a, a document. What, what document were you looking at?
That's, that was the site plan, sheet two of seven. It was the document eight-two on October 21st, 2019.
And, and on your document, you have two brown colorized things there, or squares or structures. One is the, appears to be the convenience store and one appears to be the ga, the pumps, is that correct?
That is correct. Milburn Avenue, this orientation again, is running diagonally across on the left-hand side of the sheet. Boxall Road is running horizontally from left to right on the sheet. The proposed building for the convenience store is an irregular shaped, almost a trapezoidal shaped building on a, towards the intersection. And the other brown rectangle is the canopy over.
Okay, and so, and that the, the brown building on the left, that's the convenience store?
Yes.
And, and that's the 1,800 foot, square foot convenience store?
Yes.
So again, if, if you took that away from this application, you would reduce the impervious cover, is that correct?
Well, that is correct, but then you would need also the whole number of parking space provided. So the two are going hand in hand. If we didn't have all that parking, we didn't have the building, we would most likely reorient the pumps and change the number of pumps that would be on the site.
So you're, wait a second, you're telling me that if you remove the convenience store, you'll also remove parking as well?
That's correct.
So you'll even have less impervious cover, is that correct?
Well, in that scenario, you're describing.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
But that's not the, a reasonable use of the property.
I didn't ask whether it was a reasonable use, I'm just asking whether in terms of environmentally, if you removed the convenience store, you, you reduced the impervious cover, is that correct?
I, I disagree with your characterization.
I understand.
I will agree with you that if you just remove things, it would be less impervious.
Okay. You, you're aware that the applicant is seeking a, a use variances for two uses on the site, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now.
All right, actually, I, I don't know if that's necessarily true. I know the convenience store is the use variance, I'd have to review if the two uses were also a use variance.
Now, you, when you looked at this application, did you look at whether the convenience store has grease traps?
It would not need, it would not need to have a grease trap with it. They're not going to be creating a, it's not a restaurant use, so you're not going to be, I don't believe that you would need to have grease traps associated with this because of, it's basically prepared foods that would be on the site itself.
Will there be any cooking on site?
I don't believe so, but that, the architect would be able to answer that.
But, and isn't it true that if you're doing cooking, you need grease traps?
Not necessarily in terms of what the, an exterior grease tank, it might be able to be just an interior one.
Now, at the last hearing, a, a member of the public asked you about noise as it relates to individuals who would visit the convenience store. Do you care to comment on that, on that statement or question that she had asked you about?
No, I believe I was clear, I thought I was clear in my testimony. Basically, the, the noise associated with going in and out of the convenience store would be the same noise level you would have in any other commercial use and office use and things like that, the doors in and out. The only noise difference would be the deliveries from the trucks coming to the facility. That would be the only noise that would be different than what you would normally have at a business use.
Now, you, you mentioned trucks making deliveries. Did you have, did you do any study on what kind of trucks would be making deliveries to the site?
Well, the largest vehicle is going to be the fuel delivery truck itself.
And how often will the fuel trucks be, being, making appearances there?
Most likely once a week, but ideally, if this is the greatest fueling station ever, then we'd get more, but I believe it's only going to be once a week.
And when they go on the site, will they be idling on the site?
I believe that they, the trucks idle during fueling. I, you know, I'm not really sure exactly, you might have to ask the operator on that.
Now, what about delivery trucks for the convenience store? What kind of delivery trucks will be going to the, the convenience store for delivery purposes?
They're going to be basically single unit vehicles, the largest one. What that is, is a, a box truck of up to about 30 feet in length.
And how many per day will be making the deliveries there?
Again, you'd have to ask the specifically, I don't believe that they're going to be every day, but I do know that there will be deliveries for the convenience.
And they'll be idling as well, won't they?
Objection, those questions are for the operator. I request that attorney hold those questions until the operator understands.
If you have an idling truck, do you want a ruling, Mr. Chair, on that or not?
No.
Is that, is that sustained or is that no?
No, means I'm not ruling on it.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'll, I'll, we'll wait for the applicant, we'll give Mr. Simon a chance to probe that. I'm sure he'll, he'll do a good job on that. With respect to the trucks, you, you mentioned, what kind of trucks will be making delivery? And how many trucks per day will be making an appearance? That's for the operator?
That's the same answer before, as you asked.
I just want to clarify. Now, with respect to the trucks, will they be idling?
I, I, again, I don't believe that the, generally, the truck operators of, and this is only my own observations, is that they turn the trucks off and they make the deliveries.
But, but you don't know that for a fact. And, and in fact, an idling truck, doesn't that cause pollution?
I don't believe in this case it's going to be creating any other pollution that you would have coming from the site or, you know, from the, what you typically have on the surface roads around this property and specifically, that pollution is not going to be to a level that's, it's going to cause a problem with the surrounding area.
The, the site itself, how long will the remediation process take place?
The, which remediation, you're talking about the, the environmental?
That, that's correct, yep.
That could probably be as few as 10 and probably as longer than my lifetime. Again, it's, it's going to, as I understand it, they're going to let nature take its course in, in the, in this, in this location. And the, as I understand it also from the, reading the environmental reports, is that the, it's slowly degrading, the, the pollutants that are in the ground. Naturally, they do reduce over a period of time, and I believe that's the course of action that they're doing here at this time.
What, at what point in time did you become involved in the application?
That's, you're going to have to rephrase the question because I, I have multiple answers to the same question.
Okay. Did, we, did you, did you start with a team at the beginning of the application when it was filed?
For this application specifically, I was one of the first individuals involved with the site.
And, and, and what was it, what was, what were you told to do as part of your assignment?
Initially, there was a, we were, looked at the, putting a service station with the convenience store in the site.
And did you work together with Mr., the, the traffic expert at the beginning of this application?
No, the traffic expert came in after.
Okay. So his study is independent of your studies, is that correct?
That is correct. He, he's looking at the surface roads and the impacts on the surface road and mine as the site.
And, and your, your job wasn't to look at the circulation of the trucks going in and out of the site?
Well, no, that is part of my job, but the, that's not what you asked me. You asked me specifically about the traffic.
Okay, and maybe I'll, and this may be, again, for the traffic expert. You have people coming in and out to the convenience store, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have people lined up at the, at the six hoses, the pump?
Yes.
And let's suppose you have all of the pumps being utilized and a line to get gas on top of all the parking spaces being taken for the convenience store, isn't it going to create a problem in terms of the circulation for the trucks making deliveries?
You would have to schedule truck deliveries on off-hours, and you would also have to, specifically, we can control the fuel deliveries so that it not be handled during business hours. Maybe add off-hours to make the fuel deliveries. And then the convenience store, they would coordinate those with the off-hours.
So it sounds like it's going to be a major project coordinating the convenience store deliveries, the gas station deliveries, to make sure you, you have an ability to, to handle the circulation of the site, isn't that correct?
I was, your characterization of major, no, it's, it's a very common occurrence that they have to do on all their sites, and you'd have, you'd hear from the operator on how they coordinate this.
Now, you, you'll concede that that site has significant traffic going around that site during the day, would, would you concede that?
The, the surface roads have significant amounts.
And in fact, and I don't know whether this is your bailiwick or the traffic fix, some of them have service that will be as bad as the E-level, is that correct?
That, you'd have to ask the operator.
Okay. But again, you'll concede it's pretty busy over there.
There's, there's traffic on the road, yes.
Traffic or a lot of traffic?
That's, again, a lot is a, how do you characterize that?
Okay. I'm sure the neighbors will talk about that when they have their opportunity.
I'm sure that they do.
Okay, and I'm sure the board members will look at the site on occasion themselves. Let me just check my questions here. Now, the, the hours for the site, I think, will be, what, six to 11?
You know, we stipulated this last time, I believe it's six to 11. I, I.
It's seven to 11, is that correct?
I don't know.
I'd have to look back at my notes.
Six, six to 11, or, I'll certainly stipulate to the seven to 11, but it's.
No, six to 11.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, six to 11.
Okay, fine. And you had a chance to review the environmental and, and the circulation. Do you think those hours should be reduced even further?
No, I, I don't know why that would be.
How about the traffic you just talked about?
No, the, reducing the hours, the, the 6:00 AM is going to be before the peak hour flow, peak hour traffic, again, you'll hear from the traffic engineer when that occurs. And same thing in the afternoon, the peak hour for the traffic is generally in the 5:00 range, but again, you'll hear from the traffic engineer specifically when that, that, that occurs. And so the later, later times at night, after 9:00 to 11, it'll be, the traffic substantially lower than what it currently is during, lower than it is during peak hours, so.
Now, I'm sorry.
There's a significant off, a drop in traffic for those hours, so I don't believe shortening the amount of time is going to affect any of the traffic flow.
Now, you talked about the circulation issues on the deliveries with the convenience store being there, the gas station being there, the queuing on, on the site being there, the traffic around it, and you said you can schedule deliveries. When would you have those deliveries be scheduled?
You have to ask the operator specifically on that.
But you don't know as an environmental expert whether it be in the middle of the night or during the middle of the day, you, you don't know that.
Well, he's going to deliver, he's going to have the fuel delivered on, on off-hours, and they can control that from, from the board.
And, and for the board's benefit, when are those off-hours for the delivery of the fuel?
Well, anything after 9:00 is certainly an off-hour for delivering a fuel.
9:00 at night or 9:00 in the morning?
9:00 at night. The later hours is certainly an off-hour for delivery. They could deliver during the middle of the night, I don't believe that that's what they plan on doing, but they could. And they certainly could deliver closer to the 6:00 AM period of time, or it's before the traffic starts to really accumulate on the, on the.
And, and the, the fuel and the, it's like, the food and the beverage trucks, they would be delivering in the middle of the night too?
No, they will not.
When will they deliver?
They, they're going to deliver, I believe, while the store is open, because they need to have somebody receive the goods and such. So again, they can deliver that off-hours, they can do it during the middle of the day or at worst, like, say, 10 or 11 o'clock in the morning, you're going to have a lot less traffic and less traffic at the site. Again, they could deliver them later at the, in the evening, during the peak hours. So those are, the operator will tell you about specificity about when you deliver, that they would be delivered.
And, and again, what's the maximum size trucks that would be delivering on the site?
It's designed for single unit vehicles.
What does that mean?
The single unit means that a standard box truck, you have, they're set wheels, it's not an independent cab. I guess, I guess that's the best way to put it.
How, how, how big, 30 feet, 40 feet?
It's designed for 30 feet.
And what, would they also have, in addition to the 30 feet, would they have the extenders that they use?
They might have a flat down for loading, but I don't, I don't know what you mean by extenders.
Well, many of the trucks I know have extenders. You, you open it up and you have extenders coming out, could it be four, five, six feet that I've seen?
Now, the loading area is adequate for, for the truck to raise up and lower a back tailgate to, to get the material out, so I'm not quite sure what the extender is used for.
Now, with respect to the trash, I didn't hear your testimony about trash. How will the trash be handled?
The trash, same thing, the vehicle could circulate into the site from either from Boxall Road or coming in from Milburn Avenue. It can be either a, with the way it's designed, it can be either a front loader or a rear-loading trash hauler.
Where's the trash enclosure on the site?
On the site plan, it's colored in beige, it's on the westly, the easterly side of the site, east of the canopy along the, east of the property.
And is that one bin or two bins?
The site is 10 by 15, so you could actually get to roll off units within that setup. The site is 10 by 15, so you could actually get to roll off units within that size.
And that trash would be mostly generated by the convenience store?
Uh, yes, it would probably, I'm not an expert on trash, but I would anticipate that it's mostly in the convenience store.
And how often will the trash be picked up?
They're gonna, probably initially it would be once a week and then based on the trash generated, they may have to change it twice a week.
And if it's really successful, it might be five times a week, is that correct?
I doubt that very much. That's an awful lot of trash and that's kind of uncommon for this type of business.
Well, what would be, in your view, the maximum if it was really successful? How many trash pickups a week?
Probably twice a week.
Okay. And when would the trash pickup take place?
Again, that would have to be off-hours.
Okay. And when you say off-hours, what do you mean by that?
The same hours I mentioned before, early morning before, you know, 6, before the main traffic, or it could be 10:00 to 11:00, again, later in the, later in the hours after the.
And what kind of noise will be generated by that trash pickup?
There's going to be a noise associated with the truck that has an engine to raise and lower the dumpster, so you will hear that.
And will, what we also hear, the beep 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 in the morning?
It's required to, if it's backing up, you will hear the beeping from the trash.
So if we have a very successful convenience store, we're gonna hear the beep 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 at least three times a week?
From the trash hauler, yes, that's correct.
Now, the lights on the site, can you describe the lights on the site that you're putting up?
This is sheet, it's entitled Lighting in Existing Conditions Plan, it's sheet 47, it was A1 on 10/21/19. Well, I did, I did bring a copy, there was some discussion that the board member's copy was unreadable. I did bring a handout of just this portion of the site, if you wanted that to hand out to everybody so they could actually read what they were doing.
Okay.
Good idea.
I think we're up to A3, but I'll check.
Yeah, this is being A3.
A3.
You know, after A2, below that site plan.
What's this called again, I'm sorry, A what?
A3.
A3.
Here, I'll pass it down, looks like I got plenty. We'll just call this A3, the lighting detail.
And that'll be dated today, Gail?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You got an extra one of those, though? I gotta give it to the A-teams when I get back.
And what this is, is just, this is just a reprint of the, the details on the plans. It's exactly the same thing that's shown here, it's just readable in this case, and I apologize for the reprinting in the last one. To answer your question now, by the way, we're proposing building mounted lights around the perimeter of the building itself, there'll be canopy lights underneath the canopy, there'll be recessed up into the canopy.
And this is the canopy on the gas, the gas station?
Oh, the gas station, okay.
Right, okay.
And then we have three pole-mounted lights, one at each entrance driveway and a third at, or near the loading area on the site. What the exhibit is that you have there, the pole-mounted light fixtures are the pole-mounted light fixture A, which is shown on the detail, C, the second one, is the underneath the canopy and the wall-mounted lights are shown on the right.
Now, with the convenience store, what lights will be affiliated with the convenience store?
Specifically, there'll be lighting around the building itself.
Yep.
That's gonna be associated with that. Also, the surface pole-mounted lights are needed for the traffic moving around the site. And really, realistically, what is needed, we also need the canopy lights too for lighting the site. So we've got all, all three components that I described before are for the convenience store. Even though, even if we weren't pumping gas, we would probably have to have the canopy lights on to light the site at, so the traffic can move around the site.
Now, with respect to the convenience store, you pointed at a series of lights. Tell me which lights will go or not be utilized if the convenience store is taken away from this application.
Well, if, if you're saying that there was no building here, if there was no building here, we would have to replace it with a pole-mounted lights for parking, the surface parking. So there's building-mounted lights, they're also eliminating the parking spaces, then they're eliminating the walkways around us, the convenience store.
Why would you need parking spaces if you have no convenience store?
Well, you still have some parking spaces that are gonna be needed for a, some type of gas station, but if we eliminate the building, and you're saying if we eliminate the building and eliminate the parking, well, we would then change our, number of our pumps and we would reconfigure the whole site. It would be a different configuration than what we have here for pictures.
In other words, what you're saying is, if you eliminate the convenience store, you'll go in with more pumps?
The, the simple answer is yes, and the reason is that the, the operator, he's in the business of operating fueling stations and convenience stores. If he doesn't get the convenience store, he would, to make it feasible, he would have to have more fueling positions to make it feasible for him. It wouldn't be just all one or one of the other.
But that would be a separate application.
It would have to be come back for a new application, it would be a completely different application. This is the one that we're presenting before the board at this time.
Two uses on the site.
You, you think of it as two uses? That's.
Just give me a second here.
Well, while you're looking at your notes, Mr. Delaney, Mr. Halls, can you confirm that pole lighting, A, B, and C, all three categories, they're all LED lights, correct?
Oh, that's correct, they are.
Okay.
Yes.
I think you said that once before, but.
No, because we have to ask for the, I'm going from memory, but we're asking for a waiver or a variance because the lighting is, LED lighting is not permitted in the ordinance, so it is all LED lighting.
It is now.
It is now.
Oh, it is now?
In this application, initially, it is.
Yes.
It is permitted.
Then we were no longer as an accident.
So if you stick around long enough, you never know.
You never know what will happen.
Are you aware whether there's any convenience stores slash gas stations in the immediate area?
Immediate area, there's nothing close by to what you're, what is immediate by close by?
Fair question. What's the closest convenience store gas station to the site?
You know, I should have just, I should have said, I don't know.
You don't know, okay. So you don't really have anything to gauge this site versus another similar site in the area?
I don't, I mean, specifically, we're working with this.
Is there gonna be diesel sold in this site, or is it just gonna be pure gasoline? I think you said there were six pumps.
There's six, there's three pumps.
Three pumps, but.
Six fuel positions.
Right, exactly.
There will be diesel fuel provided at the site.
There will.
Oh, there will?
Yes.
So of the six positions, how many will be diesel?
Well, then again, you have to ask the operator, they can, I don't know what kind of pumps he's going to have, because you can get pumps with, that can sell whole products at the same pump, so I don't know what type of pumps he's gonna use at the same.
And I don't know whether this is for the applicant or not, but of the percentage of people buying gas, what percentage will be going into the convenience store, if you know?
The operator knows that, they had a study done specifically in that, at the other stations, and he can talk to them.
So we'll be hearing that on a different night then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there gonna be any signage on the site preventing trucks from doing certain things on the site?
There are no additional signs restricting any truck movements on the site.
So they're free to do whatever they want in terms of turning around and backing in and backing out?
We, we have no, any sign, any additional signs at this point restricting any truck
And again, I just want to verify, how many fuel trucks will be delivering per, how many times will you have deliveries of fuel per week?
I believe they're gonna, again, you're gonna talk to the operator, he'll testify, but they would start once, once a week and they would, based on the usage of the site.
How many employees will be working in the convenience store, again, is that the applicant?
Yes, I have a, I believe I testified this earlier. For some reason, I have three in my head, but I don't remember if that's, if I testified to that number before.
That's for the.
The operator, the operator's really the one that's gonna explain that.
What I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is how many of the spaces on site will be utilized by employees?
Well, a lot of this, there's probably gonna be three spaces on the site for the employees, probably, I'm gonna assume right now, two for the convenience store, one for the fueling station. They'll, while they may not have any parking spaces, a lot of the operations, they actually have people that are from the area or wherever working the stations and they arrive at a different mode of transportation. But the parking that we're providing, we have 11 parking spaces on the site and that will be adequate according to the ordinance for the number of parking spaces needed, which means sort of.
So you're gonna have 11 parking spaces with one additional handicap spot, or a handicap spot will be part of the 11?
That's part of the 11.
Okay, so you have 11 spaces, one for handicap, and it sounds like you're gonna have three being utilized by employees?
That, I know that a lot of these other stations that you operate, that the operators or the employees arrive at different modes of transportation. A lot of them do not drive to the stations for work, they come by bus or they come from other local locations, so within that count of 11, that, that counts the number of employees coming to work next, so.
So the 11 spaces you're providing, it sounds like no more, no more than, than seven will be utilized by the customer, or be available for the customers?
No, there's 11 parking spaces we're providing on site and how that count is distributed is actually taking consideration when the counts, the ordinances are written. We take in consideration of employees along with customers that are coming in there. There'll be a distribution and then there'll be 11 spaces available for both uses.
Is there any seating in the convenience store?
The architect will explain that.
Okay. And we've talked about the lighting. When the station is closed at 11 o'clock, will all the lights still be on?
Uh, no, the lights are gonna go off at the station. There might be some minor security lighting based on whether it was required to by the police department or something of that nature, but it's not going to be lit in any fashion to give the public the idea that the station is open. So the lights off, so the building will be off, the lights of the parking lot will be off, but there might be some minor security lighting that you may have to keep on.
Now, I don't know whether this is in your bailiwick, but when you have a snowstorm, where are you gonna put the snow?
Well, we do have areas on the site, it'll be pushed towards, towards the river itself, there's a green area there, there's some smaller areas that we have along the site that could pile snow. Once it gets to the point where we have a two-foot snowfall or something like that, it's gonna get to the point where it's too much and they'll have to remove the snow. And it'll be nothing more than any other inside business would have to do under very, very large snowfalls.
Certainly it'd be a lot more effective if that convenience store was, instead of being brown, was green, wouldn't it, for the snowstorm?
The snowstorm would fall on top of it.
Now, the monitoring wells that you talked about, I think you talked about them, how many monitoring wells do you have on site?
I don't know specifically, but there are monitoring wells on the site. Those wells have to remain. If any wells are in conflict with the fueling positions or the canopy or any other type of construction, the monitoring wells will be re-drilled and they'll be rerecorded and the LSRP will oversee that.
But you don't know the number of monitoring wells at this point?
No, it's not something that I would go, there's no reason that I would know that I need to go and count all those at this point in time.
How, how big are the gas tanks that are gonna be utilized for, for the gasoline?
I'm going from memory, I think that they're 5,000 gallon tanks, I may be misquoted on that, but there's three tanks underground right now. And again, they're trying to utilize those three existing tanks. The operator's the bill, the one to specifically talk about what the tanks are. And I believe they're in the process of dealing with the state about whether they have to be removed and replaced.
So, so at this point, we don't know how big those tanks are gonna be and, and obviously it's significant in terms of how often you're gonna have them refilled.
No, the answer is, I could easily find out the answer to how many, how big the tanks are. We do know exactly how big the tanks are. The operator has all the data on the tanks, he knows what the conditions are, the tanks are in some cells. Previous testimony from the operator was he was in the process of getting the tanks recertified by the state or he has to replace, he would end up replacing them in the economy. So whatever that gallon is there, he would put that same number back.
Okay.
And don't quote, I should, I should not quote a number in terms of gallons because I, I know I'm wrong no matter what I say.
The, the reason I'm asking all this, it sounds like the operator will help us, we'd like to know how often the, there'll be service tanks or fueling tanks going in on the site, because I think that's significant.
He, he again, the one that would talk about that.
Okay. And that certainly is relevant in terms of site circulation when those tank, tankers will be there, and that's why we wanna know about it.
I can talk to you about how the site circulates when the tanker's there, I mean, that's something that's.
Can you tell, yeah, tell us.
So, I mean, the fueling tank position, fueling tanks are gonna remain in the same location whether they're being replaced or not. Fueling tanks are gonna remain at the driveway towards Milburn Avenue. The tanker will most likely enter in from Boltsall Road, stop over the tanks, drop its fueling tanks and then leave the site on the Milburn Avenue.
How many parking spaces will be blocked when the tanker is there?
When the tanker's there, at least two possibilities.
Okay, so that's, that reduces the 11 from 11, you have, you have the handicap fellow and you have the employees and you have the two or three, it would sound like you're down to five for the convenience store.
No, that's actually incorrect because the handicaps always, there will always be a space for someone to park, we don't discriminate exactly who comes to the site, we can't.
But that can't be used, utilized by members of the public for the convenience store, unless they have a handicap placard.
Well, they're allowed, like I said, if they're permitted to park there, they're allowed to come on the site and utilize the space. What we do have is that, one of the reasons I said before is that we would. What we do have is that, one of the reasons I said before is that we would drop the fuel during, or dispense the fuel at off hours is to make sure that it wasn't a time where we'd be interfering with the traffic coming in or out of the site or the operation.
What's your definition of off hours again?
It would be early morning, around 6:00 AM before the traffic starts to come into the site. You have 10, 11 o'clock in the morning and then again later on in the evening after the turn.
But isn't it true though, the convenience store is busy all day long?
There'll be people in and out, but well enough, there are, the convenience store is very similar to the bypass traffic that comes in. As the traffic is, there's more traffic on the roadway, bypass traffic, you will tend to get more customers for the convenience store. If there is no traffic coming by, you'll have less customers.
Mr. Chair, for the environmental expert at this time, I have no further questions.
This is the site engineer, he's not the environmental expert.
Oh, I was crossing him as if he's the environmental expert.
He's already testified at the initial hearing and Mr. Simon has already cross-examined him-
That's fine, okay.
-on his site plan.
Okay, that's good.
His testimony, cross-examination tonight, was intended to be limited to cross-examination on the EIS. His firm did submit the EIS, but he is not an environmental expert. The operator has a separate LSRP dealing with the environmental issues.
And my questioning was related to the EIS?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, I have no further questions on the EIS.
I have some questions. These are questions on A3.
Yep.
You hand it out. Do I understand that there are proposed, the 17 lights are mounted on this property? Am I reading that correctly?
Eighteen, I believe it is. It's, uh, seventeen. So you said seventeen? Yeah, I had it wrong for a second.
I have a question for you. I see that there's no variance requested unless I'm missing it for height of the lighting. And I'm showing the light pole detail on A3 to be 15.
Seventeen and a half.
Seventeen on top of a concrete footing.
That's how you get to the seventeen and a half.
Seventeen and a half, that's how you get to seventeen and a half. I can answer that we chose a shorter height specifically. We were trying to bring the light poles down so it did not have any effect on the visual impact from the, to the residents across the street.
Now, that's not my question.
No, I know that. I know that the, we are, the height of the pole is inconformity with the ordinance, I'm just trying to explain why we brought it down in height where seventeen and a half is a fairly low height for a pole.
May I redirect? Thank you. Dave, is it true the existing law coverage is 92.2%?
Um, yes.
And is it also true that the proposed plans will reduce the impervious coverage to 76.6%?
That's correct, yes.
Is there an expert opinion that the reduction of pervious coverage will also improve the drainage on site?
It will, yes.
Okay, and then does NJDEP allow for the redevelopment of prior gas stations during an ongoing remediation of the site?
It does, yes. The environmental conditions of the site do not preclude the redevelopment of the site.
Okay, and then the application as far as it goes for parking?
Actually, in a commercial application, I'll clarify that. If it was residential application, we couldn't, if it was a commercial application, we can redevelop the site while, in and whether there's contamination at all.
Okay, thank you. And then in regards to parking, is the proposed application co-compliant for parking?
Yes, it is.
And does the code take in consideration all intended potential individuals using parking such as employees and also patrons of the site?
It does.
Okay, I have no further questions. Just witness.
Your next witness.
Yes, my next witness, I'd call Harold Maltz for traffic.
Can you just redirect me if you're from testimony against my case, your vote becomes true?
I do. Harold Maltz, M-A-L-T-Z.
Harold, can you please provide your educational credentials for this board?
Yes, I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering and a Master of Science in Civil Engineering with a major in Transportation from the Newark College of Engineering. I also hold a Master of Science in Environmental Engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I'm a licensed professional engineer by test in New Jersey since January of 1974. I'm also licensed in the states of New York and Pennsylvania. I've been a full-time transportation consultant for the past 50 years specializing in both traffic and highway engineering. I've also served as an adjunct on the faculty of the New Jersey Institute of Technology for whom I've taught a course on highway engineering, both on campus as well as to employees of the New Jersey Department of Transportation at their main facility in Ewing or Trenton. I've appeared-
Can you also just provide to this board a few municipalities that you've appeared before?
Well, I've appeared in front of this board many times, have also done work for the municipality in the past. I've worked for the planning board in Milburn and I've appeared more than a thousand times in front of boards and other municipalities and other boards that I represent, Washington Township, the Board of Adjustment in Morris County, Madison Borough of Madison, Borough of Morris Plains, have done work in Roxborough for 23 years.
And then is your license in good standing?
Yes, it is.
I have no further questions.
I think the board knows me very well.
I think, well, I accept him as an expert.
Great. All right, Harold, did you visit the subject property?
Yes, I did.
And did you study this property in conjunction with drafting your traffic study?
Yes, I did.
Okay, are you familiar with the township's zoning ordinances and also master plan?
I didn't review them specifically for this project.
Okay, why don't you discuss to the board though, those findings you did have in connection with your study?
Yes.
What I'd like to do just for reference purposes, I'd like to hand out the warrant. This is the intersection of Millburn Avenue, this is a Google Earth photo. It's exactly the one that I had blown up that's on display easel. It's just for, based on my discussions, that you can see the entire intersection, 'cause the site plan doesn't go to all of the other intersection approaches. So if I could-
We'll mark that as A4.
A4.
Google map, aerial, yes.
This is only for reference purposes to make it easy to follow.
Yes.
Marked for it?
Yes.
Yes, the report I submitted, the traffic study I submitted entitled Convenience Store Gas Station was dated December 4th, 2019. This is the record that was prepared by my firm, Hamel Associates Incorporated, that's H-A-M-E-L, located in West Orange, New Jersey, a principal firm. The report was prepared by me and as to all the fieldwork that was done, the traffic counts, the vehicle gap studies that we'll be getting into in a second, it took two people to do each one of those, but I was one of the people involved in everything at every single location. So I didn't hire out to other firms and such to do the work, I was involved in everything Specifically, I was retained to determine the traffic impacts of the project at the intersection of Milburn Avenue and Walks Hall Road, the Ridgewood Road, that's the signalized intersection, as well as the site drives on Walks Hall Road and Milburn Avenue. And thirdly, to do the comparative evaluation on the AM and PM peak hour proposed use versus the prior use. In terms of, I'm trying not to overlap too much with what Mr. Hall said, but in the reference, the drawing, I'm going to A4. North is directly straight up, Milburn Avenue goes left to right, that's the east-west. Walks Hall Road comes in on an angle from southeast to northwest and it's called at the southway. Ridgewood Road is offset to the left of the intersection from Walks Hall. Reed Circle is at dislocation to the opposite of the Milburn Avenue Drive of the site and continuing down from the site drive on Walks Hall, about 100 feet away is the Franklin Street T intersection. And the site is located in this vicinity at the southeast corner of the intersection Milburn and Walks Hall Road. The, in terms of what's proposed, as Mr. Hall noted, it's an 1,820 square foot convenience store with six gas pumps. He said there were 11 parking spaces, including one handicap. It conforms to the parking ordinance of six spaces per thousand. If you work it out, it comes out to one of the spaces. And there are two existing driveways to remain on the site. Those are the driveways, one of them is on Milburn Avenue at the easternmost end of the frontage, the other is on Walks Hall Road at the southernmost end of the frontage away from the intersection. And there are two existing drives that are located right around the curve at the corner. Those are to be closed, those two existing drives are gonna be closed. The, in terms of the existing conditions, Milburn Avenue is also known as county route 630, an east-west roadway along the frontage, east of Walks Hall Road. It's posted for 25 miles an hour and the width of the road is approximately 54 feet. It provides in the westbound direction, it provides two through lanes with right turns going to Ridgewood Road permitted out of the rightmost lane, and there is an exclusive left turn lane as you come up to the intersection. On the eastbound side of Milburn Avenue, west of the signal, Milburn Avenue's posted for 35 miles an hour. And coming eastbound, you have two through lanes with left turns permitted out of the leftmost lane to go with the Ridgewood Road. And as you can see on the plan, there is an exclusive right turn lane for movement that continues to go into Walks Hall Road. Walks Hall Road has two lanes in the, I would call it the northbound direction. The leftmost lane is marked for a left turn only, the right lane allows lefts, throes, and rights. And in the southerly direction, it's marked for only one lane, it's 18 feet wide, but it's only marked for one lane, it's not, not paid and marked for two lanes. I've indicated that you have Reed Circle, which is actually a cul-de-sac roadway. There's accounted 19 residential drives located on that street, so, but there is no through access on that roadway. And the intersection is signalized, it's a county signal. It functions under three-phase semi-actuated, it's the main responsive to vehicles, three-phase semi-actuated operation on 120-second cycle. That means, for example, if you started at your green on Walks Hall Road, went through the three cycles, came back to Walks Hall, it would take you 120 seconds, two minutes. The three phases of operation are Phase A, Walks Hall Road goes, but the non-conflicting right turn lane on eastbound Milburn Avenue overlaps with that maneuver. Phase Two, Walks Hall stops, but both directions of Milburn Avenue go, including the right turn lane, that separate right turn lane in the eastbound direction. The third phase, everything stops and Ridgewood Road is the third phase. And in fact, I should point out, it's gonna come up when I get into the details of the capacity analysis, what is significant about the overlap for that right turn maneuver eastbound, approximately 75% of the 120-second cycle, that's about 90 seconds, is given to that right turn lane. And as you all know, that is a very heavily traveled roadway, I'm gonna talk about that In terms of data collection, existing traffic, I obtained the site plan from the, Mr. Hall's, this is a picture from the area of the Applewood area. I applied background, annual background traffic growth rates as provided by the NJDOT for these roadways. The signal timing I obtained from the county is dependent on my report and I performed the field inspection in the authority to quote of the dislocation. Supplementing that, critical to the study, I performed traffic counts at the Milburn Avenue, Walks Hall Road, Ridgewood Road intersection on Thursday, November 14th of 2019, from 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning and 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the evening. This was a normal business day, schools were in session, we checked and weather was good. The 2019 existing traffic counts were expanded to 2020, anticipated build-out here for the project based on the NJDOT background traffic growth rates. The peak hours were identified as 7:45, 8:45 in the morning and 4:30 to 5:30 in the evening. And one of the last things that we'll be talking about, but I'm just gonna note that it's additional work that we did in the field, after the traffic counts were done and the peak hours were identified, vehicle gap studies were performed along both Walks Hall Road and Milburn Avenue relative to the two proposed driveways. And I'll get back into that shortly.
What were the peak hours again, Mr. Maltz?
7:45 to 8:45 and 4:30 to 5:30.
Thank you.
Okay. In terms of the warning peak hour, Milburn Avenue eastbound, the largest intersection approach volume of any of the four approaches was the eastbound approach, which had 856 vehicles, of which 648, or 76%, made a right turn on the Walks Hall Road. That was the single largest approach and movement. There were long traffic queues that identified that extended not beyond even the left turn lane, which extended down the roadway, was very dynamic. Get the greens, remember, three-quarters of the time that right turn lane gets a green. So 90 seconds out of 120, it moved and I've seen this on many, many occasions. Walks Hall Road northbound, the left turn had the, had a large reverse flow to Milburn Avenue westbound. The entire approach had 773 vehicles in this hour, but the left accounted for 610 of them, 79%. Basically what you had is around the corner movements, right turn to go south and a left turn to go west. That accounted for almost 60% of the entire intersection's volume, those two movements. movements.
During peak hours?
During the peak hours, yes. I'm, I'm talking only peak hours now, heaviest times of the day. And I also noted that in the northbound direction, it was frequently occurred that queues on red would begin to build and extend up to, and it wasn't uncommon to go past the proposed site drive, or the existing site drive on Walks Hall Road. But when the Walks Hall Road signal went green to that approach, those queues would diminish and you'd have openings opposite that particular drive. On Milburn Avenue westbound, this was a lightly traveled approach, not even three hundred cars in the entire hour, and it functioned well. Everybody cleared on every green cycle of the light and you, when it was red, you didn't have any long backups that occurred. And it was a similar situation on Ridgewood. Ridgewood is a two-lane local road, one lane each way. However, it flares out as you come to the intersection and it actually functions as if you have a right turn lane, even though it's not really marked like that, and a combined true left. It just flares right out. However, I would point out that of the traffic on this approach, uh, out of the two hundred and seventy-seven cars on this approach in the entire hour, two hundred and forty of them, almost ninety percent went straight across the intersection, the Walks Hall Road. It was, it was almost one directional. In the PM peak hour, similar to the AM, Milburn Avenue again, eastbound, had a very strong, a very large right turn movement to go down Walks Hall Road. And once again, once again saw a long eastbound traffic queues in that direction. Now, Walks Hall Road northbound, once again, have a heavy traveled large reverse flow in Milburn westbound. You had the same around the corner flow as you did in the morning, except we had bigger flows in the evening, larger, a little bit larger volume. And then in terms of Milburn westbound approach at Ridgewood, it was comparable to what I observed in the morning. They both worked, they both worked well. In terms of traffic projections and assignments, I know, I, I've discussed it before, before this board, the person who does the traffic engineer, we utilize the instituted transportation engineers publication, trip generation tenth edition, that's my term of the edition. And for this land use, it's known as land use number eight fifty-three, convenience store with gas pumps. And the base, as shown on table one, uh, the traffic projections for eighteen hundred and twenty square foot convenience stores marketed with gas, it's seventy-four trips in the morning peak hour, thirty-seven in, thirty-seven out. And the PM peak hour, it's ninety, broken out, it's forty-five in, forty-five out. Now, for this particular use, it's also noted in the IT publication that this use has very high pass-by trip rates. And almost sixty-three percent in the morning, sixty-six percent in the evening peak hour. What a pass-by rate is, it's somebody who is already on the roadway. For example, let's say somebody was, let's say going east on Milburn Avenue and says, oh, you know, I want to go into the convenience store. He'd make a right in, do what he wants, come out, and continue on his way. Was, he's a new trip in the driveway, but a long Milburn Avenue, he's an existing trip. So it's not a new trip on, on the roadway. Similar thing would be Walks Hall Road. The other component is what they call primary or new trips. That's somebody who says he wasn't on the road, let's say going to work, he's at his house and, you know, I think I want to go to that convenience store and leave his house, go over there and never returns. So you have two components, but the pass-by is almost two-thirds of the total traffic. And as shown on table one, the new trips added in the morning, when you apply those rates, it's only twenty-eight new trips, fourteen in and fourteen out in the morning. In the evening, it's thirty, fifteen in and fifteen out. So the new trips added to the area are actually very, very small. In terms of orientation for the new trips, it was based on the existing traffic patterns identified by the traffic counts that we performed. And I also performed the comparison with the existing gas with service building. Obviously, the facility isn't there anymore, it's partially burned down. So I employed the IT trip generation for a land use nine forty-four, which is gas slash service station, which is what it was before. In the AM peak hour, it would generate sixty-two trips and eighty-four in the evening. This is only nominally lower than what this project would generate. This project would generate twelve additional trips in the morning and six in the evening at total two-way. And this is, these differences are too small to have any notable traffic impacts at any particular location. Moving into the back end of my report, the analysis, the, we employ the two thousand and ten highway capacity manual and the highway capacity software to perform the analysis for both signalized and unsignalized intersections. My table two, which is the peak hour capacity analysis summary, I had two thousand and nineteen existing conditions, two thousand and twenty existing no build, which includes background traffic growth, and then the two thousand and twelve proposed full build, which takes into account new trips and pass-by assignments in the driveway. For the summary that I'm going to present, what's really the most important is the two thousand and twenty comparison of no build versus the two thousand and twenty built. Compare the two and what happens. And I would note, engineers, and you've heard this many times before, we talk in terms of levels and levels of A through S, A, B, C, B, E, F. A and B are very free-falling or minimal delay. F, it doesn't mean that it's failed, it just means long delay, it's got a lot of traffic, long traffic queues. C and D are blue peak hour levels of service. And a level D, it ranges from D to F. An E doesn't mean that you haven't necessarily heard poor condition. And in fact, an E, in urban, either metropolitan areas, Milburn is part of the greater New York metropolitan area, it's a level, uh, township, it's developed counties, it's not like the Robin War or Sussex County where they have different standards. A level D is also during peak hours, it's well-bearish in existing accepted local service conditions. However, we really don't get much of that in explanation shortly. On table two, the two thousand and twenty existing no build in the morning peak hour, the, all the movements, rather than going through every single one individually, they're predominantly level service, D or better, which are good peak hour operating conditions.
What page are you on?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Yes. Let's table two.
Okay.
There was one movement for Ridgewood Road southbound, the left through movement, which is at a level E, but it's an E right at the line with D. It's about a second past the D. I should explain, when you cross these levels of service, it's not like you're stepping off the cliff. You're a D and then you suddenly stepped off the cliff in an E. The difference between a D and an E is half a second. So we want to keep that in perspective. This is still considered a good peak hour condition. Similarly, in the PM peak hour, all the movements for the no build function at D or better. With the build out of the project, the, uh, all the levels of service in the morning stay unchanged, except the Walks Hall Road, the northbound approach. In the no build, it was literally right at the threshold, the D was right at the threshold of the D, and then we added one and a half seconds to it, so it just crossed to the line from D to the E. This is negligible. Impacts in the evening peak hour, there were no levels of service changes, everything was D or better, which are good peak hour performance level. I would note, for any of the approaches that experienced increases in delay, it was in the order of less than one second to about a second and a half. These types of increases in delay, motors, you think about it, would be imperceptible to anybody on the roadway.
So, I'm, I'm having a little trouble following you candidly, because what I'm interested in is what happens when cars queue up on Walks Hall Road northbound, waiting to get into the gas station, and the two lanes become one?
You're gonna, I'm going to come to that next.
Okay.
Just one, the last section covers that. That's the vehicle gap studies.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So essentially, that finishes the signalized analysis. At the Walks Hall Road intersection with Drive A, there's no left turns in or out proposed. It's proposed only have right in, right out. And in fact, I was the one that recommended that to my client, based on the gap studies I performed, which I'm going to talk about, and that's where you're going with your question. I'm going to address that. The critical movement at this location is the right out, and functions in each peak hour at a level of service speed, which is a good peak hour performance level. The numbers of cars exiting are actually very, very small in that magnitude. I think it's something like, in one peak hour, it's like eighteen cars and less than the other one, an entire hour. So this is very low volume. At Milburn Avenue and the driveway there, which I also included the Reeve Circle approach, even though it's a dead end or cul-de-sac roadway, all the critical movements out there will allow a full access, lefts and rights, in and out. And that functions at levels of service A or B in both peak hours for all the critical movements. Now, the final part of my report is the, or the vehicle gap study analyses that we performed. And what that entails is, at each of the driveways, related to each of our Walks Hall Road, as well as on Milburn Avenue, we performed the actual timings, actual field predictions, I was involved in this myself. So I was there as one of the two people when we did each location. These were, performed also in November, but it was done for seven forty-five, eight forty-five AM, at four thirty to five thirty, because you actually go out and do them after you identify from the traffic counts, the seven to nine, four to six traffic counts, you identified the peak hour, knowing the peak hours, you then go out and do your vehicle gap study, because you do it for that one hour, the worst hour. And what we're measuring is, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, it'll be easier to follow me at the Milburn Avenue location, there are two different timings that we make. The most critical timing is, if somebody was going to make a left turn out of the drive on, onto Milburn Avenue, that driver has to get a break in both directions of flow of, of the traffic on Milburn Avenue. He has to get a simultaneous break in both directions. And what we did in the timing, even if somebody was in the furthest most lane, took the most conservative condition, wouldn't have made any difference if somebody wanted to go to the left lane, or if the second through lane was open. We said if any car, any car broke up the gap on any lane, that broke the gap, it was the most conservative situation, even if two of the three lanes were open. The second analysis related to rights out and lefts in. In this particular case, the right out only has to get a break in the eastbound flow of Milburn Avenue. He has no interaction with somebody westbound. He's making a right and somebody's coming this way. Similarly, if somebody wants to make a left into the site, he only has to cross the eastbound traffic. So it's not as critical as the two-way, which needs the simultaneous two-way gap. This one only needs a gap in one direction. And the exact same scenario applies for the Walks Hall Road gap studies, the exact same thing. You think about this turn here, it's the exact same thing, a two-way gap and also then the one-way gap for the right out of the left in. Now, how is this done? And then I'll, I'll tell you the results. The gap standards are based on the two thousand and ten highway capacity manual, and I appended to my report the two pages, which identify the values that I used in the roadway conditions. These, both of, first of all, both of these roadways, even though it's two-lane, one lane, one lane the other, they have a standard for a two-lane road and a four-lane road. Here you got a four-lane road with a left turn lane that's slipped in. So both of these were analyzed as a four-lane condition, which requires some higher seconds of analysis. And what we have first is what's known as minimum gap acceptance. And what that means is, for the left turn out, the minimum gap is seven point five seconds. What that means is, between zero and seven point four seconds, standard is, a car can't get out, the driver will not decide to make his left turn maneuver. You get up to seven point five seconds, one car can get out. And then you have what's known as the follow-up time. For a two-way flow, the two-way gap on a four-lane road, the follow-up time for a left turn out is specified in the table at three point five seconds. Now what does that mean? Starting at seven point five, which is the minimum you need to be able to say, okay, I can make a left turn out, add three point five seconds, so between seven point five and eleven seconds, one car can make a left out. If you have a longer, longer from than that, add another three and a half seconds, between eleven point one and fourteen point five, another car can get out, so your capacity is two. And then every three point five second multiple above that, you keep adding up as you go. And that's how it's done. But once again, under seven point five, zero cars can make that maneuver. For the right turn out, and I'll just tell you what it is, the minimum gap acceptance is six point nine seconds, and the follow-up time is three point three seconds, each multiple thereafter. To the left turn in, it's even shorter, the minimum gap is four point one seconds, and the follow-up is two point two. Now, uh...
This is only for the Milburn Avenue?
No, no, this was done for Walks Hall also. They're both summarized in my report. I, I was just pointing this ability at the one drive, but what I described at Milburn was also performed at Walks Hall.
With the same results?
No, 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 they both, that's why you do them separately. They both, this was a very likely traveled lane at the intersection. This is a very heavily traveled lane at the intersection. So I'm going to explain what the results were right now, and that's going to, that's going to answer your question. And it's also why, what I'm going to say is also why I recommend it to my client, no lefts in and out of Walks Hall Road. And I, I think it'll be very apparent when we get done in a moment. The, for the, and by the way, even though I ultimately recommend it based on my results, no left in and out, it was based on the analysis we performed that reinforced my opinion. I, I should tell you, I've lived in West Orange for forty-two years. I've traveled through this intersection many, many, many times. The doctors' offices that are to the east of our site, I've been to doctors there, I've been to doctors down Milburn Avenue where Valley crosses it and buildings, I'm familiar, I used to cut through here, going to seventy-eight to go to the, to and from the airport. I've traveled through this area many times, I've done studies on Milburn Avenue not far away. So I, I do have a lot of familiarity as to how this intersection, the street operates, as well as what happens on peak times. The terms of the AM peak hour at the Walks Hall Road intersection with the proposed drive and the, for the left turn out, which is where you're looking at a two-way gap, that's the worst condition, there were twenty-two gaps that had seven and a half seconds or more. And they were in the range of about seven, seven and a half seconds to twenty-five seconds was the longest one that occurred. And the capacity, based on that three and a half seconds, these were rather short, there was only capacity for thirty-five vehicles making that maneuver. However, what I found was the distribution of the gaps that occurred was rather uneven. In the first fifteen minutes, in a whole fifteen minute period, there was only one acceptable gap having a capacity of one car. And that was in the first fifteen minute period. And then the balance of what I described was in the remaining forty-five minutes. So even though, if you just looked at the numbers, if we had what's... if we had what's say seven or eight cars coming out, you say, well, you got a capacity of thirty-four and it looks great, but I know operationally what's happening there and the operation is, is not evenly distributed. And that could be problematic. And I think that's, this is what I'm starting to get to.
Right.
The, uh, what's happening here, and this plays into the evening even more, the Box Hill Road southbound flow is the opposed direction. That's that one wide lane, has a very large line in the morning. There were nine hundred and thirteen cars that went southbound in that single lane. Most of it came from Milburn Avenue making a right turn around. The balance came from Ridgewood, where most of it's coming straight across. And that's two out of the three signal phases. And in addition, when the third one, when Box Hill goes, this heavy right turn is still maneuvering. So what's happening is it creates a situation where because of the timing of the light and the heavy flows around the corner, that the gaps were short and were in freedom. That's, that's basically what's controlling there. The right turn from the drive only has to make a right turn into that first lane. However, once again, if we saw a break occur even in the left turn only lane, we said, that's it. Even if somebody could have made a, a right turn into the right lane, we said either lane, if either lane broke the gap, then we took the most conservative approach. Now, what we found, there's eighteen in the morning, there's eighteen cars projected to make a right turn out of the site. However, there were forty-one minimum gaps with a capacity of one hundred and twenty-six vehicles. So there's more than adequate to accommodate right turns out of the driveway. In terms of the left turn in, even though not permitting it, I'm gonna explain what I observed. There were sixty-four minimum gaps with a capacity of two hundred and fifty-four vehicles. And while on the surface, the gaps and the corresponding capacity looks good, observing the actual operation of the signal, what's have, what, what I observed could happen is that Box Hill would go green, go to red, dissipate at the queue and then the queue slowly builds up. Meanwhile, this movement continues into the second phase, the right turn movement and begins to move down. And when that queue on Box Hill gets to or past the Box Hill site drive, if somebody making that right turn decides to make a left turn out of that single lane, that will potentially block the following traffic. Or if the signal switched to Ridgewood and it was still blocked because the queue on red extended past Box Hill, that would affect the ability to go through. Now, it is eighteen feet wide. If somebody pulled close to the double yellow line, the driver could sneak by in the right. But I took the most conservative look at it and said, you know, practically, I don't think that's gonna work well. So in terms of Box Hill in the PM peak hour, it's gonna be a little bit easier to describe. For the left turnout, which is the, going the two-way gap, there was only one two-way gap in the entire hour. You just couldn't do it. And that's where I think you're coming from.
Right.
And I, I think I spelled it out, I described what's there. And the capacity was equal to one vehicle, okay? And consequently, this was also the real major consideration of no left turnout. The right out functioned well again. There were twenty-six gaps, the sixty-nine vehicles, the volume is twenty-two. So we have more than adequate capacity for the right out. And the left in, it was similar to what I described before. It looked on, in the analysis, it would look like you had adequate gaps and capacity, but because of how the traffic moves and the single lane, if you had two lanes in the southbound direction, I'd say there was no problem because somebody could be in the left lane and everybody else moves by him in the right. But you don't have that. You have a wide, single lane, southbound and you just can't automatically assume that everybody's gonna huddle the WLR. Consequently, this is why I recommended when I got these results and before I prepared my report and I did all the other capacity analysis, this is why I contacted the applicant's attorney and I recommended to him to speak to the client and that I recommend no left turn in and out.
Yes, and the client has agreed that they will prohibit all left turns in and out from the site from Box Hill Road?
Yes, and I should note, this is during the peak hour periods that you see this. Off-peak, the volumes are much lower at this location on these roadways and you don't have the big, long queues like you do during the peak period. You could make left turns in and out, there's no doubt about it. And the late evening and the weekends and such. I've been there at those times and I, you know, I've come through there and I've never had a problem.
So how is the client prohibited?
We're gonna propose signage and just to earn a side of caution be twenty-four, seven and won't be during specific peak hours.
It's not gonna be seven to nine, four to six, no left. It's gonna be all the time.
But, but you can, I mean, you can do that from your site. You can tell people you can't make a left-hand turn, but you, how do you tell people that are on Box Hill that they can't make a left-hand turn?
Close signage.
So on the right-hand side of Box Hill?
You, I, I would envision there probably could be two signs. One would be on the, as you're coming down, it'll be on the far side angled up towards the no-left turn facing that driver and another one on this side supplementing it. So you have it on the right, remember it's a wide, single lane. It's not as if one guy's being blocked by visibility or another. So you have one angled and one facing flush, no-left turn. Similarly, there'd be a no-left turn sign facing into the site. Could be supplemented with a pavement arrow, with a right arrow. But that's, that's what, that's traditionally what you would do. And I think I'm being very, very candid about my observations and what we identified at these locations. And I think that addresses what you're concerned with.
Right.
Finally, the last thing I have to say relates to the Milburn Avenue driveway. This is gonna be full access. And I do have a summary table on sheet A twenty in the appendix, where you can see what the different time periods are for the, on A, Milburn Avenue Drive. The left turn from the minor road from the driveway, there were eighty-nine gaps with a capacity of three hundred and fifty-two cars. The projected volume is only eighteen cars. So I mean, it's moved. For the right turn from the minor road, there was seventy-four gaps with a capacity of almost seven hundred. We only have one car projected to go right. And the left turn from the major road, it was eighty-three gaps with a capacity, theoretical capacity of eleven hundred. The volume is projected to be seven. I should note, this particular driveway had twenty-two of the gaps for the left turn in, the right turn out, that ranged between one and two minutes, sixty-one to one hundred and twenty seconds. The reason why you had that? You had, not only is it a lighter volume leg at the intersection, but you have signals creating gap breaks at Box Hill Road. And meanwhile, you go further down to the east, there's another traffic light, Valley Road. I think you're just into Maplewood at that point and that also creates gaps in the road this way. And that combination creates very, very favorable platooning effects on roadways, on the traffic flow along Milburn Avenue. I'm not gonna get into the PM peak hour. It had similar type results. The gap studies for the Milburn Avenue driveway were excellent. You know, this would work in a, in a very minimal delay situation. Okay, finally, just in terms of my conclusions, the proposed convenience store gas station will have no detrimental traffic impacts at the Mil, Milburn Avenue, Box Hill and Ridgewood intersection with full build-out. As I stated, impacts range of, an average vehicle delay increases of less than one second to about a second and a half. And it's, that magnitude is imperceptible to motors compared to the mobile condition. The levels of service are all good, acceptable peak hour conditions. Projected volumes, I noted, are seventy-four AM, ninety PM. That's total two-way, they distribute fifty-fifty. And it's made up of only twenty-eight new trips in the morning and thirty new trips in the PM. The balance are pass-by trips, as I said, which are existing vehicles on the roadway which decide to turn in and then exit the subway. And the net increase in the peak hour trips compared to the prior use is twelve trips total two-way in the morning and six in the E, PM. This is very nominal. And recommend that signs and pavement markings should be posted as noted in the plans as in traffic report in my testimony. And that essentially completes my testimony.
And Harold, you also stated that there is no mitigation required for the proposed improvement at the intersection?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And no further questions for this witness?
I'll be the third, let us leave.
Word members, questions?
So I've got a couple of questions. You talk about a high percentage of cars that are pass-through. Is that the term you use?
Pass-by.
Pass-by. Could you explain to us how a pass-by is able to maneuver around the inside of the site to go out, the same driveway that they came in?
Okay, the, for example, if somebody was coming...
Can you bring up the, the...
The other?
Use the site one so that we can see where the pumps are and how...
The site plan.
Yeah.
What's that, A one?
It's back to E two.
E two.
It's a colorized site plan. If somebody was coming on Box Hill Road northbound, this is the northbound direction here, they would make a right in, hold the pump and if they wanted to go out to Milburn Avenue, either direction or Ridgewood, they would continue out and make their left or right at that location. If they were coming Milburn Avenue westbound, they wanted to come in, they'd come in and then they could only make a right turn out onto Box Hill. If they wanted to go back to where they came from, they'd make a right or extend out Ridgewood or left to Milburn Avenue. Similarly, if somebody was coming from Ridgewood or Milburn eastbound, they would, they can't make the left turn on the Box Hill. They would come in here, they'd make the right turn out and then they continued to either of the three directions. If somebody wanted to make a left to go out Box Hill Road, that's the one movement, that they'd have to come out and do a turnaround on the site and then come out Milburn Avenue to be able to make that maneuver. That's the only one that, that's encumbered. But once again, we're not dealing with a lot of traffic on the site. And I think one of the things you have to consider is this is a, a local site and people with, I think if you're repeat users, they're gonna know what the turn restriction is and if it doesn't favor them, they're not gonna come here. I believe there are, if you go down Box Hill Road, the nearest gas station I could think of, I had to note that I never went into them, is not the next intersection at Valley, but at Springfield Avenue. I think there are...
It's four.
Yeah, there, on, on, I think, I think maybe three. I think it's three corners. And I don't recall they have convenience stores or not. I know some of my buildings there. I didn't, I've never stopped in them, but I've certainly gone by them. So that's just down the road to the southeast.
So one more question then. So you're saying that based on your understanding of the volume of use, that you don't anticipate cars queuing up on Box Hill to get into the gas station and blocking traffic? You don't envision that happening?
No, not all. The, the traffic being generated is not very high. This is, this is not like a Wawa or a Quick Check. This is a small, this is a small convenience store with gas site. Only has six pumps and it's not a huge building. Like you see these, don't get mixed up with the, the larger ones which have a large number of gas pumps and larger buildings than this. I don't see a queuing situation here. And there is room, I mean, Mr. Paul's designed the site and looked at the circulation, various movements. But from my understanding of speaking cap, there is room for people to bypass it. The pumps were taken. There is room for people to bypass and move by.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Mr., Harold, let's just go back real quick to that driveway entrance onto Milburn Avenue. Due to the fact that you can't make a left turn out onto Box Hill Road, can that driveway accommodate that additional traffic of those individuals who'll be exiting out of Milburn Avenue?
Absolutely, and that's exactly what my report analyzed.
Okay, and can you just put in perspective as far as the numbers go about what would be required?
About the numbers were on the assignment?
Yes.
The, as shown on exhibit six, which is page fourteen of my report, this is the site-generated total trip assignment, which is the combination of both new trips and pass-by trips. It's got them both combined. The exiting traffic from the site onto Milburn Avenue is nineteen, only nineteen cars in the entire hour. That's eighteen lefts and one right. That's on average, that's like one car every three minutes, put it in perspective. And in the PM, it's twenty-three cars exiting, twenty-two lefts and one right. Once again, it's about one car every three minutes. In terms of right turns in, it's eleven cars in the AM, fifteen in the PM. And going westbound, it's both seven cars in each peak hour making a left turn in. These are very, very small numbers.
And again, these studies are being conducted during the peak time period, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then, in your expert testament, would you say that these additional trips would be de minimis?
Yes, they are. They're by no, they're by no means large. In addition, the driveway onto Milburn Avenue, that's the widest end of Milburn Avenue. It's not like what you have on the west with the heavy turn to go down Box Hill Road. This is very, in fact, in terms of the traffic queues, I made observations, no patience. The traffic backups on red at Milburn Avenue going westbound never extended, they, they extended up to the drive a couple of times, signal cycles. But what I did was, we cut it off even if it was on the far side lane by the curb. We considered that nobody can come out or if somebody was even within one car length of the driveway. I was very, very conservative. I said, the vehicle has no place to turn left and store in the lane even if the second lane was open. We said no gap. So, but this is a lightly traveled leg of the intersection and that's why that nominal volume, that very low volume works very well on that particular leg.
But don't you have the same problem on the Box Hill? Isn't that driveway always blocked by the red light?
Not all the time.
How many, how many cars would you say it takes to queue up before that driveway is blocked from the, from the corner?
It's about four car lengths. The fifth one would block it.
And in rush hour, you gotta have five cars queuing up there at the red light all the time?
No, no, when it goes green, when it goes green, believe me, I sat there and I did the two-way gap analysis myself.
So I'm just talking about making a right-hand turn, not a left. I'm talking about making a right out of that driveway. The cars are gonna be blocked by the five cars queuing up at the red light.
When the light goes green, that, well, believe me, that approach moves.
I believe you.
And, and the queue diminishes.
Right.
It shortens up.
But then it builds back up as soon as it turns red?
Yeah, it starts to build back up, but it's, it doesn't automatically boom in two seconds. It's there. You have a very light volume you're dealing with. Like I said, there's only eighteen cars coming out in the morning and twenty-two in the evening. That's like one car every three minutes. You have to get one car, the cycle is two minutes. So you're going one and a half cycles of the light to get one car out. And you have even less, nineteen cars coming in in the morning making a right in at twenty-three in the evening, about the same. So you're talking about one car here and there making a right in, right out. So I'm not concerned about that because the queue always drops every cycle of the light. That approach moves very, very quickly. I'd also tell you, there's one other thing and I had it in my notes. One other thing that I observed is people who are queued up at the light, they tended to leave more than normal gap lengths between cars and there was adequate room for a driver to be able to maneuver out into one of those gaps. Essentially, it's like getting a courtesy gap and move it to the flow for that one car here and there. This isn't, this isn't like a supermarket.
No, I'm just thinking about the three gas stations you mentioned, two intersections away and what kind of havoc that goes on there all the time with the lights changing. That's a very, very busy area as well.
Well, everybody has a different situation. Well, everybody has a different situation.
Harold, by no stretch of imagination, my engineer nor traffic engineer, and you had stated before that the trips being generated at the site are de minimis and/or nominal. Can you just put in perspective for me and tell me exactly what number would actually take in consideration where you would have suggestions for making reasonable accommodations?
Can you say that again?
Sure. You said that it's de minimis to have your trip assignments being at either seventeen or nineteen. They're nominal, right? What number would trigger where you would no longer say they're nominal, but rather they're of concern?
Well, the state of New Jersey says when you have a hundred trips aboard, they call that a significant increase in traffic. Our highest total generation irrespective of pass-by or new is seventy-four in the morning, total two-way, and ninety in the evening, total two-way. We never even hit that hundred threshold as defined in our field and by the D O T. That's called significant increase in traffic.
Okay. I have no further questions.
I have a question. I want to go back to the signage on no traffic, left-turn traffic going in to the site from Vox Hall. Where are those signs? Where do you suggest the signs would be placed?
There would, for the traffic that you want to prohibit coming southbound on-
I want to put an expert aside there.
One of the signs should be posted by the drive, on the southernmost part of the drive, and that would be no left turn. And you could place another one on the other side of the curb line.
But that's somebody else's property.
Uh, no, there's, there's, you place it near, just offset of the curb line, you have right-ofway. The right-ofway line, those who ended the curb typically could go about ten feet past. So, you're able to post signs within the right-ofway. That's a county roadway.
If you have the county's approval.
Yeah, obviously, this is-
Yeah, so we don't see county approval for that.
You have to get county approval.
Sure.
So, could you use the site map to show us where the signs are going? I don't see the, it's hard to see the driveway on this one. Yeah.
I think one would be located about right here.
Okay.
And it would be angled, you're on the other side of the street, so it would be, it wouldn't be flush like this, it would be angled, the face toward the driver. And the other one would be a sub-location at around here somewhere, they, they pick a spot.
Well, maybe it's before the driveway, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Here's the drive, I've got it about the middle, but the county's going to review it, they'll pick the best place to do it.
Okay.
So that people are aware that as they come up, it's reinforced here, and then there would be a sign facing the outbound driver, no left turn, and we'd have a right arrow pavement marking.
Thank you.
Once again, this is all subject to the county review and approval.
Any other questions from the board? From the board? Counsel, Jay, do you have any questions?
I do, a lot, but, but I think we'll let the public go first.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Come forward and make a line there. Now, when you ask a question, you don't have to be sworn.
Okay.
You do have to give your name and address.
Okay. I'm Bonnie Wofsy, twenty-one- W O F S Y. Bonnie, B O N N I E. Twenty-one Reeves Circle. Two questions. Did you know that there's a bus stop right in front of, on Milburn Avenue, right in front of there?
I saw the buses.
Yes, and you took that into consideration?
Yes, they, they stopped, broke up the gap, and-
Okay. My other question is-
Is there a bus stop?
Yeah, where is the bus stop exactly? It's right past the driveway, I think.
There is a bus stop, I don't remember exactly where, but I-
It's on Milburn Avenue.
Yes. Uh, excuse me, on Milburn Avenue, but I, I don't remember-
Right across from Reeve Circle.
Yes, and I remember seeing the buses, I had notes about it, I may have even reported the bus, so I don't remember. But I don't remember exactly which bus was on there.
Now, I'm glad you recommended the no-left turn out of the Vox Hall side of the station. But have you ever tried to make a left turn going westbound on Milburn Avenue onto Vox Hall Road at any time of the day? Have you?
Yes, I have.
Yes, and how long did it take you to get almost getting killed?
You have the traffic-
Let me just finish. Because of that, as you stated, the very heavily traveled right-turn arrow coming from the other direction, there's no left-turn arrow going westbound on Milburn Avenue.
Just the questions and our comments, we can still comment.
Well, I'm trying to get there, sir, so if you just give me a minute, I've listened all night long.
I'll give her a chance.
Have you ever tried because there's no left-turn arrow? So, being that people will not be able to make a left-hand turn onto Vox Hall, they'll have to make a right-hand turn, or they'll have to come out of the station, make a left, go to the light, and make another left in order to go back to Vox Hall Road. My concern is, without a left-turn arrow, it is dangerous now as it is without any traffic from a 7-Eleven or a gas station. Add that into your picture. It's going to be a nightmare because I've lived there thirty-eight years.
Let him, let him answer the question.
All right, so, that's my question.
First of all, this is not a 7-Eleven.
What's it going to be?
It's a convenience store.
It's a convenience store, but it's not a 7-Eleven. They run twenty-four-hour operation, this is not twenty-four-hour operation. In terms of the traffic we're generating, that projected to make the left turn from Milburn Avenue to that Vox Hall, we're talking five cars in the morning, peak hour, six in the P M. Okay? I'm well aware of what you're talking-
But the other direction, yeah.
And I just wanted to finish. Um, I know what you're talking about, that, first of all, the, I would note that the existing traffic making that left turn is not large. It's twenty-five cars making a left in the morning, peak hour that we counted, and forty-one in the P M. This is roughly one to two cars per cycle making the left, and that's what we observed. That left-turn lane never filled up, never filled up. The left turns, they, when they made the left turn, they did have to yield to the heavy right turn coming from Milburn.
Yes, and that's impossible.
But, but they did do it. We're adding a very nominal amount, truly a nominal amount of traffic to this.
But if people can't make a left-hand turn coming out of the station onto Vox Hall, they're going to have to come out the front and make a left, another left.
But that reflected in my report already, the volumes I gave you reflect that.
I know, but there's no left arrow there, sir.
But they still do it today, and they all clear every cycle of the light. And as I pointed out-
I beg to differ with you because I don't clear during, you know, it takes me several lights to make a left there.
All right, well, you have an opportunity to-
I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Wait, could you spell your last name again for me?
Yes. W O, F like Frank, S like Sam, Y.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Name and address, please.
Yeah, hi, Merrily. M E R R I L Y. Last name is spelled R I E S E B E C K. Ninety-one Whittingham Terrace, Milburn. So, we've been talking about a circulation relative to cars in, in the property and making turns in and out and everything. But if this station's going to be selling diesel fuel, then in addition to the refilling once or twice a week, I'd expect there to be some traffic from diesel trucks, long trucks coming in.
Was talking about that.
Excuse me?
And he deferred some questions to the operator. I did not review what you're talking about, I was dealing with the trip generations in sight. You're talking about the truck delivery.
No, I'm talking about maneuverability, actually.
That's the site engineer, he addressed those issues and what they're doing. I did not address those issues on the site.
I'm talking about maneuverability of trucks when you can't make turns and, and turning radius and all of that stuff. Did you contemplate it? You don't, that's not any of your concern?
I'm telling you, the site engineer addressed those issues, you should really ask him those questions.
Okay.
My name is Michael Wofsy, the other half of Bonnie. W O F S Y. Your study was done on one particular day?
Yes, it was, well, it was spread over several days in November.
It was spread, oh, because I, you just mentioned one day, that's why I'm asking.
The traffic counts at the intersection, the four hours, was done on one day. Once the peak hours were determined in the morning, then we went out and did the gap studies for those time periods at the two drives, which were done on different days.
All right, and I am unclear about this pass-by thing. Since there is no facility there now, how can you determine how much traffic is going to go in and out of that site?
Well, as-
It doesn't, if you don't have a facility there now, I don't understand how you can determine that.
Because we're proposing a certain facility as an convenience with gas service. And if you heard my testimony, we base the trip generation on statistics from the Institute of Transportation Engineers publication. Trip Generation, tenth edition, that's what I testified to. That's the source, it's the bible for traffic engineers throughout the country to use. For many types of land uses, three volumes are stacked up like this, and you identify the trip generation, and then you look at the traffic patterns in the area, and you make assignments in those pass-by numbers that are discussed. And to make them up, they're also identified by studies in the I T.
Okay.
If another traffic engineer came in front of you, he'd be telling you the exact same thing.
Okay. My other, my other question, well, it might be a statement, but I'll present it as a question. Has you taken human nature into consideration as far as people, during peak hours, people are coming home from work and they're, you know, all, there's a lot of things going on. You expect them to obey the left turn, the no-left turn, number one, out of the gas station onto Vox Hall Road versus taking a secure this route to get where they want to go? I maintain that that will cause-
No, you can't maintain that.
Oh, okay, okay.
You asked your question, I was taking human nature.
You asked your question.
No, it's going to be posted for the restrictions. Expect people to obey that. If somebody finds a problem with it, they won't go to the station.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Name and address, please.
Hello. Sherry, B A R R, Chocrié, S H O K R I E H, twelve Reeve Circle.
Can you Sherry pass her say?
S, I'm sorry, S H E R R Y. Thank you. I just have three points, mainly clarification. When my neighbor mentioned the bus stop, I just want to make sure that it was understood by all, that it's on both sides of the street.
Correct.
Okay, because it's not just on one side.
Yeah, I observed them, I made notes in my, in the field that there were buses there. I may have, may have noticed what bus line it was. I don't remember off the top of my head.
Okay. And then, my other question, I guess, is for the, the committee. Will you still secure the township traffic study, or what we hear tonight is the end of that?
We're, we're working on hiring our own experts.
Okay, excellent. One more question about the time, and I don't know who to address this to. The previous gas station that was there closed at about eight or nine o'clock, it was not open till eleven. And the businesses in that area, a lot of them are medical, and there's nothing there open until eleven. So, is that kind of not determined yet, or still it's definitely going to be eleven o'clock?
That's the application.
Okay, then I'm finished, thank you.
Did I understand you to say that you did not do a traffic study on-site?
No, 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 no. The, the-
On the site itself?
You didn't do traffic circulation interior to the site?
No. The, the site was laid out prior to me doing my study, I know it was.
Do you have no opinion on it?
Well-
Traffic-wise?
So, I, I know it functions, I went over it, discussed it with the, Mr. Pauls. In terms of any input, I think that the, the only thing I pointed out to him was, before I did my study, was that, that I felt that the left turns in and out on Vox Hall could be problematic. That bore out from the studies that I, that I performed.
Counsel?
Your, Mr. Chair, it's ten o'clock, and in terms of continuity, is it possible to have Mr. Simon handle the cross at the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Because I noticed that Mr., the expert noticed and looked at his watch as I was ready to step up to the podium.
When can this matter be heard again, I mean? March sixteenth.
And just, and not to beat a dead horse, but can I, I know, I hope Mr. Simon can read the transcript, but I just want to clarify, this witness's testimony was limited to the traffic out on the roads and it wasn't doing with the circulation. So, I can tell Mr. Simon that he doesn't have to beat this fellow up on, on circulation, uh, traffic.
I asked that question, you heard the answer.
But I want to make sure it's not going to, we're not going to be surprised at a later point in time with-
Well, his report is, is, is what it is. I mean, Mr. Simon has access to that report, it's in the board's file.
And I'm going to give-
It's clearly limited to, um-
That's right, right. Okay, I'm going to give him, Mr. Simon, a copy of the report, I made two copies of it, so, and he'll, we'll get the transcript as well. Thank you, by the way, for the courtesy, Mr., Mr. Chair.
Should I leave the board here?
Uh, has that been marked? Yes, it has to be.
Yeah. So, Board Chairman, just to clarify, this will be carried to March sixteenth, no further notice will be required.
That's correct.
And we will have Mr. Mull's return for cross-examination by Mr. Simon.
And if you could get us the transcript so that whoever's available, that would be wonderful.
And for the record, I will report back to Mr. Simon, and hopefully the A team will be back before he leaves.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going into new business now. And we have one matter that I would like to discuss with the board members who are here. Joy has advised us that she will be out of the country for March April and May, and asked whether she should resign. Excuse me.
I had not reviewed Cox or the statute, but I have since then. And putting it in simple terms, unless a member is excused by a majority of the authorized members of the body, and that person fails to attend and participate at meetings for a period of eight consecutive weeks, or for four consecutive regular meetings, whichever shall be lawful. The office shall be deemed to be vacated. Now, my view is that I think it would be a big loss for this board if she were to have to leave because she, her position was vacated. Is Wolfgang still around, or did he go home?
He went home.
I spoke to him, and I asked him two questions in two different phone calls. The first was, does he expect to be here during March, April, and May? The answer was yes. I then asked him the second question. Would he be willing to substitute for her on the sub, excuse me, Subcommittee with Mary to work on the memorializing resolutions? He was enthusiastically interested in that. So, now she is, two further points. Number one, she is out of the country on business, not on pleasure. And number two, I, I lean prepared for the annual report, a list of the folks who have attended meetings and missed meetings. a list of the folks who have attended meetings and missed meetings during the last year. Only one person on this board attended every meeting. I won't say who it is. One person only missed one meeting, Mary McNabb. One person missed only two meetings. She was one of the two. So my view is that I would like to see her remain on the board, and I would like to see her excused for the five meetings, and there will be five. Excuse me, during those two months.
I thought it was three months, March, April, and May.
I'm sorry, it's three months.
So it's probably six.
No, it's five meetings, I've looked it up.
Well, there's two in May.
There's one in April and two in March.
April will have one meeting.
I'm sorry, there's one in April.
One in April?
Two in March, two in May, there are five meetings.
So we, which one, don't, which one is our meeting date in April? Because I have it listed for two dates.
We have only April twentieth.
You're right.
Not April sixth.
Right. So, I would entertain a motion if everyone feels the way I do. I would entertain a motion that we excuse her for those five meetings.
I'll make a motion.
A motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? I would advise her that she's been excused.
I think she enjoys serving.
By the way, she's not here tonight. For those of you who don't know, she had oral surgery this morning. That turned out to be more serious than she thought it was gonna be. She was planning to be here tonight.
Right, and she sent us an email.
Yes, she sent an email. So thank you very much. We're meeting on this case again on March sixteenth. And hopefully, Eileen, we will conclude our negotiations for our traffic expert.
Hopefully, let's, hope. Does he have any conflict, do we know that at least?
Definitely. He doesn't believe he does.
But he's checking.
He's checking.
We don't know. It's, it's tough. It's tough. I, I actually called three different traffic experts, and only one of the three even called me back. And I left a message for all three, and I spoke to all three on the phone. Only one returned the call. And then, after we made the contact with him, we bound a. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
So who, who, one second? With it.